I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which determines one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
We will call this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, July 22nd. The time is 7:05 PM. If the clerk would please call a roll.
Yes.
Joe Bugonham? Jody Hollingshead?
Here.
Wheezy Michael? Wheezy, can you hear us? Can you hear us? You want to pass her and we'll go back. She's going to go over. Jenny Saleen?
Here.
Mark Downs?
Here. She is.
Thank you Wheeze. Deputy Mayor Butcher?
I'm barely hearing you, but I can hear.
Here.
Mayor Trumbull?
Here. The first matter of business is approval of minutes of our July 1st, 2025 Regular Meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? Approved by consensus? Yep. No opposition. Then, we have correspondence. The WIC Annual Breastfeeding Awareness Walk proclamation is Anna Ash of the Monangelia County WIC program here. And if you want to come around this way so that they can get us on. Whereas, the Special Supplemental Nutrition Program for Women, Infants, and Children, WIC, received by the, or received the WIC Breastfeeding Support Award of Excellence for their breastfeeding activities, and whereas, WIC recognizes the importance of human milk's unique nutritional benefits and non-nutritional benefits to mothers and infants, including receiving benefits in growth and development, a reduction in the risk of infection and chronic disease, and the protection of both the mother's and the infant's health, and whereas, the addition of the WIC program with the inclusion of the hospital liaison serves the mothers and infants in being discharged from the hospital by supporting them with their initial breastfeeding experiences and offering follow-up breastfeeding support in the local counties, and whereas, the breastfeeding peer counselors in the local WIC agencies offer hands-on lactation support for breastfeeding mothers and infants who are struggling with latch, maintaining milk supply, and encouraging mental health awareness in postpartum mothers, and whereas, WIC joins professional health organizations and breastfeeding advocates worldwide in celebrating World Breastfeeding Awareness Week, August 1st through 7th each year, to collaboratively raise awareness of the numerous benefits of breastfeeding, to strengthen individual, family, and community support for breastfeeding, and to further strategies that promote breastfeeding practices and support increased breastfeeding rates. Now therefore, in appreciation of breastfeeding mothers and of all the dedicated professionals, communities, volunteers, and organization who off, who support our efforts, I, Danielle Trumbull, Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim August 7th, 2025 as Annual Breastfeeding Awareness Walk Day in the City of Morgantown, West Virginia. Thank you. Yeah, I'll turn you back around.
Thank you so much for having me here today. I would personally like to thank Christine Wade for me being here. What started out as a phone call to the city clerk's office to see what permits we would need for this event turned into being here today to collect this proclamation from the mayor. Prior to COVID, the WIC office held the Breastfeeding Awareness Walk for several years. With this proclamation today, we have not only reestablished the event, but have intentions of making it an annual event moving forward. It is our goal to take an event that started out as a way to empower mothers for their rights to breastfeed in public, to now being a way to empower mothers to seek education on the benefits of breastfeeding for themselves, their children, and for future generations. Some of the biggest hurdles I've witnessed in mothers who have chosen not to breastfeed relate to outdated stereotypes around formula feeding, Appalachian cultural practices, family dynamics, and the lack of affordable evidence-based educational resources. As I speak in front of you today, I wish to address the stereotype that formula feeding is a status symbol and replace it with a question. What if we value children's health as the ultimate status symbol? The benefits of breastmilk for infants born prematurely to, infants born at home full term are exponentially greater than the bare minimum nutritional value of formula. While I do not discredit the need for formula in extenuating circumstances, most of the mothers that I have interacted with who have chosen to use formula did so being uninformed prior to having a baby of the proper way to breastfeed, or they had a history of family that used formula, therefore they lacked support and education to do so effectively. This brings me to the cultural mindset that if you just work hard and you don't need anything more than what you can bring home with your own two hands. Is there anything more Appalachian than that? It is very hard to correct a cultural influence so palpable in our local communities. We are a proud culture of hardworking men and women who have been raised with the mentality they can either do it themselves or go without. If we combine that with the magnitude of misinformation that can be found on social media, we have a demographic of new mothers who feel isolated in their struggles. Between breastfeeding requires support from family and local communities to be successful. Something so simple as a statement made about how well a mother is doing can be the difference between her continued breastfeeding journey and giving up completely. It is often said that breastfeeding is the easiest way to feed a child, but if you do not have the education of how to latch, or if you do not know what an improper latch looks like, it is very easy to get discouraged and choose something easier in the moment. But that has the potential for long-lasting health issues. The hurdles of not having access to affordable prenatal, childbirthing, breastfeeding, and parenting classes are all reasons so many women have a hard time getting the information they require to make informed decisions. One of my biggest talking points with mothers is that it is their body, their child, and their life that we support their choices wholeheartedly. The issue becomes that if they don't have access to evidence-based care practices, those choices become those of survival and not informed consent. In recent months, my coworkers and myself have seen an increase in initiation of breastfeeding and duration of breastfeeding with mothers who have felt supported in their need for continued education. The WIC offer, office offers free breastfeeding classes, not only to our participants, but to the public at large. It is a goal, it is a service many people do not know about, therefore it is underutilized. It is our goal with the creation of this Annual Breastfeeding Awareness Walk that we will be able to inform more people in the community that they have the support they need, that they have the right to informed consent through evidence-based research, and that we can break those generational cultural disparities of care. Thank you so much for allowing me this platform to bring these concerns to the community.
Thank you.
That was our only item of correspondence this evening, and we have no public hearings, so we will move on to our unfinished business item of boards and commissions. Are there any nominations for board and commission appointments?
I move to reappoint Ashley Swanson to the Human Rights Commission.
Second.
Great. That being our only item of unfinished business, we will move on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. Generally, you have four minutes to speak. Please begin by stating your name and address for the record. We do have a sign-up sheet, but anyone wishing to speak afterwards is certainly welcome to do so. The first person on the sign-off list is Annie Cronin-Yorick.
I signed on the second line on purpose. She is. Annie Cronin-Yorick, 7th Ward, Human Rights Commission. I stand here as your interim acting incumbent Chair of the Human Rights Commission. We were unable to meet this month to have elections on account of we did not have enough commissioners to do so. This has been attended to this evening, so thank you very much for putting Ashley back on. She is quite an asset, although she left, so she won't hear me say that. Also, one of our commissioners was in California and forgot to tell me about it until the day after the supposed meeting. Or maybe it was the week before, I don't remember. Been busy. Human Rights Commission has much work to do. I have been taking forever to write the annual report, but it's very detailed. It has many colors. It's pretty. It has footnotes. Well documented. Quite nice. You may not enjoy it. We have a lot of things that we want to do, a lot of things we have been doing. We need to improve our visibility. We need to attract more commissioners. Please, anybody? If you please. It takes work. It takes dedication, and it takes caring about people and showing up to meetings. Other than that, it ain't brain surgery. So she who should know. I do have an issue of concern that is human rights related and not something this council can do something about, but hospitals are required under federal law to have screening for domestic violence. So when someone goes to the emergency room, they're supposed to ask, "Anybody at home hurting you?" That sort of thing. Instead, they've all changed it to, "Do you feel safe at home?" And I think, "No, my staircase is terrible. Every time I go near it, I fall down and it hurts." I did domestic violence cases in the attorney for 30 years, and that question does not prompt domestic violence in my mind. They used to have posters up all over the emergency room, said she spends too much time there. And they used to have little blue dots you could put a sticker on the bottom of your urine specimen cup, and they would take it discreetly and notify the correct people and have somebody there to help you in no time without your partner or nurse accompanying you having to know about it. I recently had an interaction. I asked the nurse after being there for four hours, "Do you screen for domestic violence anymore?" Of course we do. They ask those questions in triage. I went through triage and they did not ask me any questions. Well, I ask all my patients, "Do you? Because I've been here for four hours and you have not asked me. How do you know that I didn't break my fingers because my husband slammed my hand in the door because I didn't make what he wanted for dinner?" She looked at my husband and said, "Is that what happened?" Has anybody ever answered yes to that? If so, they belong in jail for incriminating. Not with it. As a community issue though, this domestic violence is still pervasive everywhere, but I'm particularly aware of it in this area. And I don't know what we can do as a community to prompt the hospital, to follow federal guidelines, their JCO funding, their ACA funding, all kinds of things depend on them screening for domestic violence. And they have to write policies on it. I asked my ER doc, "Do you have a policy on this?" Probably. I have no idea where it'd be though. I thought they'd ask in triage. So domestic violence being the huge problem that it is, it'd be great if we could do something to maybe prompt some action, at least at the emergency room. And I imagine that applies to both hospitals. Any questions? Comments? Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Cal Carlson.
Good evening, Council. California Carlson, 814 Ridgeway Avenue in the 5th Ward. I'm speaking tonight about the election ordinance that was on last week's ballot, or last week's agenda, I should say, and I noticed it wasn't on tonight's agenda, but I still wanted to share some of my thoughts about the ordinance. I wanted to thank Councilor Michael for responding to my email about it, as well as Councilor Hollingshead for acknowledging it as well. Some of my concerns about how the ordinance is written and, you know, just overall with the municipal elections being moved to the county ballot, it removes local control from our municipalities, and I just really worry that bills like this are just a slippery slope towards our municipalities losing even more local control. You know, we saw this during the session with SB 279 regarding home rule and nondiscrimination ordinances, House Bill 2381 about allowing non-city residents to vote in municipal elections. Luckily, those bills did not pass. And so I think the way that the ordinance is written, you know, you're looking at starting it in 2030. I recommend 2032 simply because we have the 2030 census coming up, and we have the 2031 legislative redistricting process. This would be a really great, you know, fresh start for everybody. And so with that, you know, I do recommend that perhaps this is a great opportunity to reconfigure how our wards and boundaries commissions work instead of every other year, especially with the staggered terms of council. Perhaps we just go to every 10 years and we work cooperatively with the county on these boundaries so that, you know, if wards want to align with precincts or, you know, however, you know, the city boundaries change, we ensure that those alignments are in check with what the county is doing. Another thing that the ordinance did not address is that the prorata per voter cost to the county for municipalities. And I did see a fiscal memo on the first page preceding the ordinance that said that our county clerk said that these costs were negligible. However, in the SB 50 bill, as it's written, it says that this is a requirement. And I know that Westover has just under 3,000 voters, Star City has around 1,000, and Granville just under 1,000, but Morgantown has 14,000 voters. And so $14,000 every other year is still a huge cost savings from a standalone election. Another thing that had a couple different administrative questions about this ordinance, would the city's clerk retain responsibility for the candidate filing and nomination petitions, or would this duty transfer over to the county clerk? Additionally, who would oversee the campaign finance reporting requirements? Would those still be filed with the city clerk? Would those be published and run through the county clerk? I will point out too that I can't locate on the city's website, only the first quarter reports from the 2025 election cycle are published, and I didn't see a general report for the election, which would have been like the first part of April, or the second quarter financial reports, which would have been anything until June 30th, or final campaign reports for candidates closing out their accounts, because state code 3872 does say that it is unlawful for anybody to take office if they haven't filed these reports. And another part of moving to the county ballot for municipalities instead of having our own standalone elections is ballot fatigue. These council races are now going to be at the very bottom of the nonpartisan ballots. You know, in a presidential year, you're going to, you're going to be listed under the magistrates, the judicial races, the school board, and you're going to be right above levies and other ballot initiatives. So this is going to cause an additional cost for people who are interested in running for city council, because, you know, you're going to have to raise more money, you're going to have to spend more money, you're competing for voters' time and attention, whereas, you know, since we've had the ability to have our standalone elections, there's a lot more time in advertising for this. So while I do understand, you know, it is legally necessary to comply with Senate Bill 50 and move the elections, I just do ask that maybe this ordinance be revisited to address some of these concern, concerns, and, you know, let's ensure that our ordinances are airtight and don't need to be revisited in the future. So thank you all for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing, anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we will skip past special committee reports as we have none, and on to our consent agenda. As a reminder to council, our consent agenda is to be approved all at once with one vote. If there, I will read each item that is on the consent agenda. If there is a desire to pull any item off of the consent agenda, we can do so at that time. So Item A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget for the City of Morgantown Airport Improvement Fund. Item B, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing a contract with the Monangelia County Board of Education for a school resource officer at Morgantown High School. Item C, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing a contract with the Monangelia County Board of Education for a prevention resource officer at Suncrest Middle School. Item D, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for a transportation alternative program grant for Morgantown Municipal Airport Bike Path and Walking Trail Connector. Item E, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for a transportation alternative program grant for Chestnut Street streetscape construction. Item F, consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing application for a transportation alternative program grant for Spruce Street streetscape design. Item G, consideration of approval to accept grant award 3-54-0015-058-2025 from Federal Aviation Administration for runway 18-36, extension, construction phase five and design phase six. Hold on, I have to scroll. Item H, consideration of request for exemption from vacant structure registration for 442 Baird Street. And Item H, consideration of request for exemption from vacant structure registration for 731 Wells Street. Is there any item that anyone would like to pull off of the consent agenda? Seeing none, we will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second.
And now, will you please call the roll?
Jenny Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saleen?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. That passes 6-0. Brings us to our new business this evening. Item A, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance authorizing a right-of-way and easement release over lots 6, 7, and 8 of the plan of lots for Barnes and Batoni in Morgan District.
Deputy Mayor, this ordinance would authorize the city manager to release an existing sewer utilities, and the easement is located at a property in Morgan District.
Parkview Drive. This is an area just between the Morgantown corporate boundaries and Star City corporate boundaries. There is property improved with a mixed-use commercial building, and the building when constructed, the owner constructed a new sewer line. And the building, when constructed, the owner constructed a new sewer line around the property that has been dedicated to the Morgantown Utility Board for Use. And the existing sewer utility easement is no longer needed for the system. The property is being sold and as a part of the transaction, the parties are requesting that the city release this pre-existing utility easement, which was acquired by the Federal Works Administration in 1942 and later conveyed by quick claim deed to the city in the 1950s. Because this is an area just outside of city boundaries, we did approach the parties and ask if there was interest in annexing this property to the corporate limits of the City of Morgantown. Due to their transaction timelines, they did not wish to pursue that at this point. We are going to follow up and ask for contact with the purchasers and the current tenants to explore opportunities to annex this property into the city.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Questions for Attorney Sanders?
How did the, how did the developer go about building a building on top of a city right-of-way with, without?
Without this happening.
Without this, you know, and then now we're in this position where we have to retroactively release and, release an easement?
Yeah, and obviously, this is a discretionary action of council. You're not obligated to release this. It's a property right that the city holds. And so it is your option to, to execute this release or not. I'm not familiar with the circumstances of how the building was constructed. Of course, it's outside city limits, so there's not a building code or permit review that might catch something like that. I think that they just did not note this existing utility easement at the time they purchased the property and constructed the building, but I'm not.
Suggest that perhaps their deed work was flawed?
I'm not sure. I mean, the easement was acquired by, by judgment orders through the Federal Works Administration. It's a, it is not the usual way you would, you would see an easement recorded, and it's, it's described as being varying between eight and 10 feet in width across the property. So also not the usual way you would visually see an easement in the title records as well.
However, I, so we're releasing an easement for a sewer line that is no longer being used, correct?
That's correct.
Other questions for City Attorney Sanders? This, we'll have a second reading, correct? This is, this requires two readings.
Yes, any transfer of an interest in land must be accomplished by ordinance of city council, so would have to have two readings.
Couple of questions.
Jody Hollingshead?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saleen?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
No. That passes 5-1. Item B, consideration of approval of a resolution amending the 2025/2026 budget for the Morgantown General Fund, Budget Revision Number 1.
Thank you, Mayor. John Ferguson's going to present on this item for you today.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Director Ferguson?
John Ferguson, Finance Director. Thank you, Mayor. Great to be here tonight. Best part of the night, right? Well, at least for me it is. That's right. So I have the pleasure of presenting to you the Budget Revision Number 1 for the General Funds Fiscal Year 2026. Now, the purpose of this budget revision, as most of us know, is that this is to reconcile our anticipated or estimated carryover to our actual carryover that we had as of June 30th, 2025. Now, before anyone gets too excited, I just want to make one particular clarification. Our budget is based off the cash basis of accounting, which means that in simplest terms, okay, and I'm not trying to overcomplicate it, the cash that we have at the end of the year, that's the amount that we can carry forward to our budget for fiscal year 26 on a cash basis of accounting. Everyone can understand that, right? Okay. Pretty simple. Pretty, at least you, I thought it was pretty simple. Now, our budget, original budget estimate was based off the historical trend that the cities had over the past 10 years, when we were developing our actual fiscal year 26 budget in the months of January, February, March. And that projection, again, was based off from what we have been able to carry forward. At the end of this fiscal year, getting towards the end, it was becoming extremely obvious that we weren't going to have that original estimated dollar amount that we were expecting. Okay? Now, the actual dollar amount that we were able to bring forward is currently at, and I have it detailed in here, so I just want to bring it up here real quick, we have a total of $2.7 million. That's a lot of money. However, we had originally estimated to have $3.2 million in addition to that, that we were expecting to carry over, except because of timing differences, okay? And also because in prior years, not every year, but in prior years, that estimate or that carryover was calculated on a different basis of accounting incorrectly, okay? We basically had overestimated how much that we were had, actually had left at the end of the year. So the purpose of this budget revision is to correct our estimate to actual. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Now, also want to make very clear, this isn't due, the difference between the two isn't due because we overexpended. It is not due because our revenues didn't come in where we expected them to. Really what this is, this is to correct the timing difference because with the cash basis of accounting, there are timing differences. If we have a timing difference of at least a week in payroll, we're talking $700,000, $800,000, okay? If we have a timing difference between when certain days of the week come in for revenue, that could be the difference of a couple hundred thousand dollars. So what this is, we are correcting to actual based on timing differences, and we are also correcting the method of accounting so that we are now consistent in applying that accounting principle, that basis of accounting, that cash basis of accounting to our actual budget to the carryover that we have in our actual budget for the fiscal year 26. Does that make sense? I hope so. Yes?
It's unpleasant, but it makes sense.
Okay, awesome. Now, also, if we were to continue doing exactly what we have been doing over the past couple years, and I'm just saying if, I'm not saying we're going to, but if we were to continue doing what we were doing, we would definitely be in a position where we would be running out of money towards the end of fiscal year 26. I don't want to put us in that position. I want to make sure that we are budgeting and we are not over-disbursing any funds more than what we have. So this right here, this is basically our safety net to kind of bring us back into where we should be, to make sure that we're not going to put the city in that financial state. We like where we are, we want to stay in that position. We don't want to overspend our funds. This is how we do it. Okay? Now, how we address that shortfall, this is where we get into kind of the nuts and bolts. Yes, we do have a plan, okay? And it's a solid plan. The first plan that we have, it's number one, we delayed our fiscal year 25 year-end capital, capital escrow fund contribution from General Fund. So we had budgeted in fiscal year 2025, $2.2 million. Typically, that happens on either the last or the second to the last day of the fiscal year. We delayed that. We're now going to wait now at least another month before we make that contribution into our capital escrow fund. Okay? That timing difference is not going to significantly impact the capital escrow fund, and it's going to help our General Fund, basically, that extra time is going to help us significantly, especially with this plan. So that was our first step. Our second step is that we are going to partially delay a portion of the fiscal year 26 capital escrow contribution representing $750,000. Okay? So after we catch up for that capital escrow contribution from General Fund from last fiscal year, which we're going to do in this fiscal year, we are going to partially delay what we had originally expected to make in fiscal year 26 until we actually bring in that additional revenue. Okay? Because we can't spend the money unless we have it. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. That's number two. Number three, now, we increased our estimate in business and occupation major construction tax revenue. Now, I know this was a, kind of a, a big topic. I know when we were developing our fiscal year 26 budget, how can we estimate how much we're going to bring in for these major projects? And really, we're talking two. One is really at its tail end, the other one is just getting off, getting going. We raised our estimate from receiving 25% of the estimated BNO major construction tax revenue for the WVU Medicine I, is it I Center? I Institute. We've raised it from 25% to 30. So we've raised that 5% more. We are not going any higher than 30% until we actually start bringing in additional, that additional revenue. That is actually at the, I shouldn't say the recommendation, that's at the, the direction of the Assistant Finance Director Denise Stefanezzi, who has been with the city now almost 10 years. This has been her baby, basically tracking, monitoring the business and occupation construction tax. She was the compliance manager for eight, eight and a half years. She's now the Assistant Finance Director. She knows this better than anybody else. I'm going to take her word at it. Do not budget for more than 30% in the first year of a major construction project, just because historically, we've never collected more than that. If we do, that's great. That's awesome. But I'm going off in her direction, just because she has the most experience, the most knowledge, and I trust her. Okay? So we did make that increase. That's part three. Part four, we reduced our budgeted General Fund contingency. Our original General Fund contingency was budgeted for fiscal year 26 at $416,000. That's now been decreased down to $151,000 and change. Okay? So we did have that significant decrease in contingency budget. Again, we can't budget what we don't have. So that's the reason why that got dropped significantly. And number five, and I do want to stress the fifth one here, is the conditional use of the Financial Stabilization Fund. Now, our intentions here are to use it only if it's absolutely necessary, which I don't believe it will be, but this is just for budgeting purposes. We are not transferring any cash out of the Financial Stabilization Fund at this time. We don't anticipate it unless we, again, unless we absolutely have to. Okay? Historically, the city does not spend every dime it has in its budget. If this is the case and we continue on our historical trend, we may not actually need this, but just in case, we do have to balance our budget. If we do need it, we do have that available and it has been budgeted for in this budget revision. Okay? Again, we're not going to use it unless we absolutely need to. And before we get to that point, I'm going to let everybody know that something's not right. Does that make sense to everybody? So I don't, yes?
So with this vote, are we authorizing it to be used if needed, or we would have to have a separate authorization?
I asked Ryan that, we talked about that two weeks ago.
Yes, this would be council authorizing the transfer of money from the Fiscal Stabilization Fund.
If needed.
If needed, correct. We are not anticipating.
Just want to be clear.
Absolutely.
I'm good.
Absolutely. Now, and also to clarify that, because I know that it's going to be asked, or at least I'm anticipating people asking, how much do we currently have? Okay? Fiscal Stabilization Fund has $3.4 million. That $2 million represents 59% of that. That would leave $1.4 million in the account if we have to use it. And again.
So that's the portion.
I don't want to touch it, but it's there if we need it. And it will only be used if we have to.
And we're only authorizing that amount?
What's that?
And we're only authorizing that amount.
Correct. That's correct.
Correct.
Okay. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. So there's our four, or excuse me, there's our five points to address that shortfall. Again, that is basically to make sure that we are not going to be in a bad fiscal position, a bad financial position where we are out of money towards the end of this fiscal year. If we were to continue doing what we were doing and spending the way we do, yes, we would be out of money. We don't want to be in that position. That's why we are doing this now. Okay? Do you have any questions on the actual trend, or the actual account numbers or anything? Okay, because I came, I got a lot of stuff here. Just in case people are wondering, okay, just because a lot of our major revenues, I do have that, and I know that I'm not supposed to give more information than I'm supposed to, but that seems to be a habit of mine. When we start talking about MSF revenue, because that's a major part of our revenue, our MSF revenue, actually, our realization for MSF, we budgeted $4.2 million for fiscal year 25, our realization was 95.1% on the cash basis of accounting, okay? Which is a very nice number. Now, remember, our MSF funds are divided into five distinct buckets. Only three of those are transferred into capital escrow. That transfer did happen for fiscal year 25. Our BNO major construction revenue, okay, major BNO construction tax revenue, that 100% of that gets transferred over to capital escrow. We had budgeted $1.5 million for fiscal year 2025. Our actual collections were $1,339,000 and change, or a realization rate of 89.3%, which is actually relatively good. It's not great, but it's relatively good. And that, again, was also transferred over 100% into the capital escrow fund at the end of fiscal year 25. So our capital escrow fund is actually very stable. It's not in, I shouldn't say it's not in dire of, of needing that additional transfer fund immediately. That's when I went back to originally, our delay in that regular additional contribution from our General Fund of $2.2 million by about a month or basically when we have the money, which we're anticipating here within a month or so, that's not going to put our capital escrow fund in any immediate danger. It's good. Okay? I probably rambled on a little too far, but any other questions?
Thank you.
Good?
Okay. Sorry. So this is, this is just a result of us using a modified accrual basis that.
The carryover is, or the past three, four years was based on the modified accrual basis, where our actual budget is cash basis.
Well, we're not allowed to use modified accrual basis for the budget, is that right?
Actually, we are allowed to. You just can't use one method for your actual budget, and then when you want to do a carryover, do a different method to make it look better. Because then all you end up doing is that you eventually.
Your budget's not.
You're going to run out of cash before you run out of budget. You're preventing that with this.
Do we feel like the, that what we will accrue is going to total out to what our modified accrual basis is? It's just that, and so that's basically why you're accounting for this and that some of this will come back into those funds?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. I was just making sure.
Yep, that's the timing difference. That's the timing difference. When we talk about modified accrual, we're talking about what's, what is measurable and what we can reasonably expect within the first 90 days of the following fiscal year. Except we already accounted for that in our cash basis of accounting. So by doing the modified accrual, you're basically, I shouldn't say you're doubling your revenue, your expected revenues for the first 90 days, but that's really what happened. And that inconsistency in applying those accounting principles put us into a position where last fiscal year, we actually carried over more than what we should have, what we had in actual cash. I have that number too. I have that number. So our fiscal year 25, or excuse me, the end of fiscal year 24, as of June 30th, 2024, we had $5.5 million. Our overall amended carryover, after we brought in an additional $1.359 million, was $7.359. That shortfall from our cash to our actual budgeted carryover was $1.85 million. So we've been carrying this kind of shortfall. It's been compounding, and we need to stop that before we actually start running into a position where we are at risk, which we're not. We're not at that, we're not at risk now. We are in a very good financial position, but we don't want to go into a position where we're not.
Yeah, so it's kind of would have just kept happening had we not changed it now?
Exactly. Yep. We would have kept compounding until there's no more cash, but it looks like we have all sorts of available budget to spend.
Yeah.
So I was expecting to have a motion a second, given the discussion of that.
Sure, we can do that. If we're doing, if we're doing this now, that's fine.
We're asking questions of the director now. If you would like to discuss with council, we can certainly do. If you would like to discuss with council, we can certainly do a motion first.
That, that's fine.
Do you want to hear a motion? Move to approve?
I was just trying to.
Do you want to second and then make your comment? Move to approve.
Please. I was trying to get a handle on protocol.
Okay.
Okay? Thanks. So, we overestimated our projected carryover based on the application of an incorrect accounting methodology, which subsequently caused us to overbudget for the year. Right?
Potentially, yes.
Because we, because we plan to spend all of that carryover in our budget. So, we're looking at offsetting revenues, we're looking at delaying transfers, we're looking at eating up contingencies, but you never talked about cutting costs. So, when is cutting costs going to, I mean, why wasn't cutting costs considered in the, in the, in the response to this?
Well, our original fiscal year 2026 was a lean budget. If you were to ask all the department head, department heads, including myself, when we brought to, brought our original fiscal year 2026 budget, our original, to ask a lot of, a lot of departments, it was, they wanted this much. When we got done, we ended up with this much. We already had a lean budget to begin with. So, if we were to cut any additional costs, the question is, what do we cut? Do we cut personnel? Do we cut actual projects, which we have already committed funds to? Or, do we start cutting across the board where, you know, we start talking about, well, what, what do you consider discretionary spending within each department? Travel and training? Our total travel and training cost for, across the entire general fund was less than $200,000 across every single department. So, really, our discretionary that we could cut, we're not talking a significant dollar amount. Where we really need to concentrate on our spending is really in our cap, at least in my, where I see it now, in our capital escrow. Those transfers that we do over into our capital escrow, which do fund a lot of different projects, those, we need to be very careful how much and the timing of when those start. That's just where I see it. I mean, other people can have different opinions, but really, that's where we're starting. If we need to, let's say, for example, if we get a couple of months down, after we get our first quarter into fiscal year 2026, and we're not seeing the revenues where they need to be, we will have to take more drastic measures. Absolutely.
And if I may, councilor, this is a discussion that has already started with the staff, and that's part of the discussion related to really just earmarking the Fiscal Stability Fund with the intent, the way we intend to not use as much of that, as one, the revenue coming in, but looking for those expense cutting. So, we do have a deadline with the state to get the balanced budget in, which is why we wanted to move forward with this plan. But, there definitely is discussion on the table that in order to make sure we're not using that fund, that's going to be through some cost-cutting measures. But, we did want to make sure that we were able to execute it with the state's deadline as well.
Yeah, I just, I get super concerned about, you know, I mean, if, if, if we're looking at options, putting options on the table, racking and stacking options for how to deal with this, I get it. But, when we start talking about approving certain amounts to eat into our contingency, then I get uncomfortable. And especially when, you know, I, I don't recall, I don't recall seeing this in our packet. I don't recall seeing this, I would have liked to have seen this in black and white, and seen it, and gone through it, having, having had the opportunity to go through it beforehand.
Did you?
So, yeah.
Did you get all that?
I didn't.
You didn't?
No. Not that, not that I recall. No.
I think it's in the packet.
The original.
I think it's the very last.
If I missed it.
Yeah. It's the very last. I think it's the very last. I'll get the packet.
Okay. Thank you.
The second agenda.
Thank you. Again, I'm trying to understand protocol here, so.
Are there any other questions for the Finance Director or the City Manager on this item? We can, we can certainly have more discussion after a motion.
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
May I make one more comment? I do want to highlight along with this, one of the things for consideration as we look at the use of that discretionary fund and have reduced that expense line item, we do know that there are things that come up throughout the year that aren't in a budgeted line item, that there is an expectation or a desire for us to move forward on. Knowing this, that discussion may be more challenging as we head into this year, that those funds that we would typically look to, to execute those unbudgeted projects or items that come up priority, do not have a source of funding that we would typically look to. So, we're going to have to manage to our budget this year, and really try to figure out if those priorities change, we're going to have to have those discussions of what gets cut in order to fund those things, because we just don't have that same bucket that we would look to.
Any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion in a second. Christine, if you would please.
Yes. Jody Hollingson?
Yes.
Weezy Michael?
Yes.
Jenny Saleen?
Yes.
Mark Downs?
No.
Deputy Mayor Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Trumbull?
Yes. That says 5-1. That is the end of our new business, and brings us to our City Manager's report.
Yes, thank you. Just a few brief items for you all today. I did want to mention that we've met a couple of times with the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency. I've been some really good dialogue with them. They meet again on this upcoming Thursday at 4:00 PM here in the council chambers. One of the items that they've asked staff to do some research on is the structure of that board as it's seen within other communities. So, we'll be bringing that forward. I do anticipate that that group is interested in looking at a different makeup of that board, including the potential of maybe a council member being added to that board. So, certainly will update you after that meeting, but wanting to make you all aware that, that is what I'm hearing, is that they may look to the council to see if there's any interest for somebody to come on that board as a voting member. July 29th, from 4:00 to 5:30 PM, the library is holding a session as they continue to work on their facilities master plan. Wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that meeting, where they're seeking feedback from the strategic partners in the community to solicit.
When is that?
Feedback. That is July 29th, from 4:00 to 5:30 PM. And I will email those details as well. And then, you all are aware as well that the week of August 4th, we have the West Virginia Municipal League Conference being hosted in Morgantown. So, we're excited to welcome members from other communities and put our best foot forward for Morgantown. So, those are all my updates tonight.
Thank you. I have a question. I noted that our Airport Director is here, and I, and we passed through all of the items under our consent agenda. I just didn't know if there was anything that we needed to know.
I think the most significant item, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but that we wanted to highlight is, on the agenda tonight was approval to accept a $9.5 million grant for the Runway Extension Project. And I know we continue to work hard to move that project and get those fundings along. So, that is our biggest news of the night related to the airport.
Yeah, I thought that that was pretty significant.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And congratulations to staff and all the work on that as well.
He's smiling, so we're good. A report from the City Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been talking about the entry-level civil service testing. So, our, we're at the end of our entry-level firefighter process, and they will be having their written exam on July 30th. So, we have 13 candidates taking that written exam, so hopefully we will have, be able to move them forward and have interviews with the Fire Civil Service Commission shortly after. Also, we are still, even though we just had entry-level testing for police, obviously, we are keeping up, keeping our applications open. We are so down on our numbers, so I want to let folks know that our next test will be in October. That date has not been set yet, but they can still apply. And you can find the link to apply on the city's website at MorgantownWB.gov. Hover over Departments, then Police Department, and then Apply Now. And it comes directly to us. I wanted to share a little bit about our boards and commissions. I know that there's been a lot of talk about boards and commissions and how, how that's going. I wanted to share with you all that now you are set up so that when someone does apply to a board or commission, all of you will be receiving those applications immediately. And you'll have them at the tip of your fingers, fingers, whenever you're ready to interview those folks. We are, obviously, we, as you know, we're low on membership in some of our departments. So, I just wanted to share with whomever may be listening to go to the website at MorgantownWB.gov. Government, and then there you'll see a list of boards and commissions. You can click on those, each board or commission, see a little bit about that board or commission, what their purpose is, and what their, the membership is, bylaws, et cetera. And just find out a little bit about something that might be interesting to them for, for our membership. To apply, if you scroll all the way down to the bottom of the page, in the green area on the far right, there's quick links. And below the quick link is a little link that says volunteer opportunities. It'll bring up some information. It'll bring up a list of all the vacancies in all of the boards and commissions. And then, there's a link that says, "Apply Online." So, you can apply online, or you can print a PDF application and then send them into the clerk's office. So, just wanted to share with folks that we do appreciate our volunteers, and we need them. And so, if it's interesting, if you have an interest, if someone in the, in the community has an interest, please take a look at those board and commissions. And then, lastly, as City Manager Miller spoke about our Municipal League Conference, it's coming up, and we're excited about that. I wanted to share a little bit about some of the things that we've been planning with that. The city's host, city night, city host night is Monday, August 4th. So, we have something planned for everyone that's attending there, and we're looking forward to that. Eureka Cafe has sponsored that event, so they will be providing those memberships with some food, and we'll have some entertainment there. So, we're excited for that. Make sure you write that on your calendar from 7:00 to 9:00. I'll be sending more information about the details of that and to you all. We also have a mobile workshop that we've been planning, and we have some interest with, or some help from our mountain line transit. They will be providing trolleys to take everyone to Hazel's House for a tour, so we're excited about that. That does require a registration, so I'll get that information out to you all as well, how to do that. On Wednesday, August 6th, is the Clerk Recorder Silent Auction, which is something that we do every year. And Director Vable connected me again with our airline. So, SkyWest has donated two round-trip tickets to either Dallas or Pittsburgh, and so we appreciate that, and for that connection, John. And then, we also have one of our staff presenting during the conference, and that is Marvin Davis, our GIS manager. He will be presenting on Making Spatial Citizens. So, it's the city of Morgantown's Use of Location for Informing the Public. I thought I would share that about our wonderful staff, who's worked hard on our GIS staff. So, we're looking forward to hearing that from, from Marvin. And then, lastly, our awards dinner is Tuesday, August 5th at 6:30, so we're excited about that as well. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Among the items on council's consent agenda tonight, you had two requests for exemption from the Vacant Structure Registry. This is a registration requirement authorized by state law, and that same state law requires that city council hear those requests for exemption. These are for structures that are vacant, but for a few reasons, cannot be occupied for a certain period of time. City Council has adopted procedures for conducting those hearings. I will forward those to council and work with you as you hold those hearings and issue your orders on those. We'll also be assisting the grant writer with the TAP grant applications you approved tonight to support those projects on Spruce Street, Chestnut Street, and at the airport. And that's all I have to report tonight.
Thank you. No questions from the City Attorney? Brings us to reports from council members. Councilor Michael, would you like to go first, since you're online?
Mayor Trumbull, I don't have anything today.
Okay.
I don't have anything today.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to note that the South Park Association of Neighbor meeting is tomorrow, July 23rd. Come hang out with us at 6:30 PM at the First Christian Church, and then the meeting begins at 7:00. I personally am looking forward to attending and kind of digging my fingers into the association and seeing how we can, how we can revive and energize it.
All right.
A common neighborhood association issue.
I've got the energy.
So, everybody's ready. Get out there. Attend.
I don't know, that one was kind of lively last night.
Well, that's what I hear.
So, you can pick up where they are. That's right. I really appreciated the opportunity to go on a tour that Council Michael organized, that we, I got to be the driver, and Council Michael got to be the tour guide, and our new City Manager, Jamie Miller, got to be the participant. And we toured Evansdale Campus, and a little bit of Evansdale, and Wiles Hill, and other areas down University Avenue, and one place in Kreps Park, the dog park and one of the trails. And then, and then, and then back to our origination point at the CAC on the Evansdale Campus. So, it was kind of a quick look, but we managed to enter several buildings and speak with some neighbors, get out of the car and walk along. And so, someone was dog walking in Evansdale, and she got a treat of, oh, look, we're out here walking around and, and looking at where you all would like to have a crosswalk, for instance. So, anyway, I really appreciate that opportunity, and I suggest that any other council people who haven't had the opportunity yet to meet and speak with our manager about what's going on in your particular ward, or with your particular interests, it's a great opportunity. So, anyway, thank you. That's enough for me.
Councilor Downs?
Tomorrow, I will not be at Span because I'll be in South Hills with the South Hills Neighborhood Association. And, and, and talking about their block party, and, and a lot of fun, all the fun that will be had there. So, from a policy perspective, I've, I've been, I've been busy. I've been keeping Ryan, keeping Ryan busy, and thanks, Ryan, for all of your, all of your support as I come up to speed and, and look to follow through on a lot of the promises that I made during the campaign. Many of those were around economic development, and, and I've shared my list of priorities with Jamie. Jamie, I look forward to digging into that with you, and, and the dialogue that will occur with council. So, as you all know, I said many times, city revenues have contracted 22% in the last 10 years. Jobs are down almost 25% as measured by MSF revenue since 2017. And, and I dug into a population, I dug into population growth, just as, just as a, kind of another barometer of how we're doing as a city. And since 2013, our population as of today is up about 1%, under 1%, 0.8%. So, so, those are all trends that we want to turn around, right? And, and, and we will. So, the five pieces of policy that I've put forward have covered housing, public safety, economic development, promoting neighborhood. safety, economic development, promoting neighborhood business. And one I'm particularly pleased with is about neighborhood engagement and civic pride, which I think, Jody, may be, may be very helpful in terms of, you know, lighting, lighting a fire in the bellies of our neighborhood associations. So with that, I'll yield, thanks.
I appreciate the opportunity to meet with the city manager, with Jamie. I think we, we did well. And I think that it's, it's been good to see the kind of responsiveness that you've had to our issues and things like that, that we've, we've brought forward. So I just want to say I appreciate the work that you've put in so far and being responsive to members of council. I don't know why these other two would bring it up, but on the 25th, they're going to be bartending, Jody and Mark.
I'll make the thing.
For a event. You're keeping on the download, but now blowing up their spot. For drinks for due process, one, two, three, right?
The co-op.
The co-op.
The co-op, okay. All right. Not one, two, three. So, you know, go down and see them and buy a cup. Well, you need to slam them so that they feel exhausted. Yeah, yeah. They feel exhausted. It's not like they're making any tips, so.
Just your smile. I already took heart.
And some of our other bartenders just gave up, but. So, yeah, no, I appreciate you guys doing that and, you know, part of the community and helping out with that, of that. And, yeah, I mean, I, I think I'm hopeful about like the direction our city's in, and I'm hopeful about the kind of new initiatives that we're talking about to try to help council be more efficient, more policy-oriented. And so I just want to say I appreciate council's willingness to listen to those ideas as we've like brought them forward, and especially to our city administration, city attorney, especially for listening to all our bad ideas. So, yeah, just appreciate all your time, and that'll conclude my report.
Yes, I have also had the opportunity to meet, I've been meeting with a lot of people lately. But Jamie Miller specifically has made time for me a few times, wants to kind of get an intro and go over some priorities. And then today, when I had some questions and things that I specifically wanted to talk about, city attorney Simonton is always willing to answer the phone when I call and have a lot of questions to ask, particularly as I step into the, the new role as Councilor Butcher, sorry, Deputy Mayor Butcher mentioned. That takes some getting used to, doesn't it? I've introduced myself, I'm like the fifth worst, I'm sorry, the main, hard to get used to. Deputy Mayor Butcher and I have brought some ideas to the rest of council about how to make meetings a little more time-efficient and, and things like that. And I will say, we are on the last item, and it is still light outside, so bravo for everyone's use of the consent agenda this evening. Hopefully, with some of the ways that the new city manager is improving the packet that council receives and that the public gets, we can continue making use of that consent agenda. I think that was the, the explanations that you put into the packets ahead of every agenda item, I think are, are very useful. So that helps a lot. Just to follow up on Christine's comment about boards and commissions, if you have an interest in a board or commission, those meetings are all open to the public, and the calendars are online, they are noticed the same as any other city meeting. The public is welcome to attend those, and if you have any specific questions, most of us have representation, we have representation on most of those boards and commissions. I'm sure the council person on that board or commission would be more than happy to talk to you about your interest. I spent the last, the majority of the last week in Columbus, Ohio, at the National League of Cities Summer Leadership Conference. I had several meetings with my university communities council colleagues and also my human development federal advocacy committee. We, we had a couple of meetings, particularly around immigration, which tends to be a hot topic of this commission this year specifically. But we also made plenty of time to start going through our policy recommendations that we will make to the entirety of the NLC membership in order for that organization to then lobby to legislators in Washington DC about some of the policies, policy priorities of cities across the nation. So I'm happy to be a member of that and that the city affords me the opportunity to attend conferences like that. And we've been hard at work. I know that the city clerk and Councilor Saleen and I have certainly been working on, on a lot of the municipal league conference items that Christine already mentioned. We're, we're so happy to have Bow Park helping us through Eureka Cafe and also with some swag bag items and some, I think they're going to even put together a, an item for the Clerk's silent auction. So they, Christine and I met with them very briefly today to just kind of discuss some of these items, and they seem very honored that we reached out to them and were giving them the opportunity to kind of showcase some of what we have to offer at Bow Park. So looking forward to that conference. I hope, I hope everyone here is planning to attend some portion of the conference, even if it is just our Monday evening welcome event for our colleagues from around the I think that's okay for the evening. Is there anyone willing to read us into executive session?
Yes. Discussion of the purchase, uh, we're going into executive session for discussion of the purchase, sale, or lease of property, advanced construction planning, the investment of public funds, or other matters involving commercial competition in the Wharf District is anticipated that council will discuss this item in executive session as permitted by West Virginia Code 6-9A4B9.
Thank you.
That's a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Yes.
All right, we will take a few-minute recess and then enter our second session.